Where we actually go to the court and we ask the court to give us an order, which allows the city to go in and abate the problem, take care of it, and charge for the time and effort. And we can do any one of those or we can do all three simultaneously. It's been the position of the city attorney's office that we want, we want to obey it. We want it to go away. That's our chief desire. We're not desiring to put somebody in jail. We're not desiring to find them, but it can happen. Another is that in the city, objects like that can be fenced in and housed. Not, not foodstuffs, not organic material, but if you have, I'd say, an automobile, parts, that kind of thing, they can either be fenced in or garaged, so that it is not visible to people who go around the city and see those types of things. So that's basically an overview, and we wanted to emphasize that now, because cleanup week is coming on the 26th of April, through that particular week. So if people hear this, understand this, or you as councilpeople or anyone in the city has this type of problem, can suggest, hey, it's cleanup week. You can get those items out on the boulevard, but remember, it's three days, 72 hours prior to the pickup. Not three weeks, like you might see now, there's some things around town. It's three days, 72 hours, you can put them out on the berm, and then whatever happens, happens. But it's really important to understand that we in the city attorney's office, and I'm sure you as councilpeople, do get complaints. You do get people asking about these problems, and there are remedies, there are enforcements, but our chief desire is to get these types of things abated, removed, away within the city. Do you have any questions?
Yes, you, yes, you can.
All right, thank you, Corky, that was a very nice overview. Just to clarify a few things, when he's talking about the timeframe, that is usually what we do for raw garbage. If we have any large piles of debris, lumber, furniture, what have you, we write out a letter, and they usually have 10 days to address the fire department and let us know their plan. Most of them do address the fire department and come in and say, this is what our plan is, we're gonna fence it in, move it out of town, or haul it away, or what have you. But whenever it comes to any kind of garbage stuff, those issues don't take 48 hours to take care of. They could take, you know, some of these piles have been going on for a long time, years and stuff. The guys are very good about holding these people through what they tell us. They write it down. They both agree what they have to do. Sometimes it's gonna take 30 days, or sometimes more. So a lot of these larger issues that we do have in town, and we are dealing with several issues in town right now, like Corky says, the snow's gone, some of the stuff is showing up. Those piles don't disappear in 48 hours. So just to clarify that, some of these are, we have, we're probably working on four or five properties right now. A lot of them are repeat offenders, and they do not disappear in 48 hours, but they are being worked on. If we do know about them, they are being worked on. One thing also, we have to go in and verify that it is junk, just because somebody has a bunch of toys, or lawn furniture, or grill, or whatever in their yard, it might be all disarray, still isn't junk. We have a definition in our, in our ordinance of what junk is, you know. I mean, there's homes that I wouldn't wanna live next to, but we still go in and inspect them, and it's kids' toys, a barbecue grill, some lawn furniture, maybe a snow blower. There's nothing we can do about those types of things, and we do receive a lot of calls on those types of things also, and we do go out and verify that it is or not junk before we can do something with them. So just wanted to clarify a couple things.
Thank you. Thank you, Corky. All right, moving on, can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Delane. Discussion. There ain't none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Bratton?
Aye.
Okay, before we move on with the consent agenda, we have a couple corrections. Ashley?
Yes, Your Honor. I have highlighted the clerical errors and added a missing council member's name from the proposed city council minutes from March 22nd, 2021 meeting, and placed a revised copy in front of all the council members. And if anyone else wishes to view this updated revised copy, I'd be happy to print one off or email it to you.
Thank you, Ashley. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, is there a second?
Second.
Joel?
Yep.
Thank you. Discussion. There ain't none, roll call, please.
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Bratton?
Aye.
All right, no public hearings, this moves us to the regular agenda.
Yes, Your, yes, Your Honor. Resolution 8.01 is a resolution to approve the transfer to Crookston Housing and Economic Development Authority with respects to the sale of approximately 10 acres to the Ag Innovation Campus, Your Honor.
Can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Move it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tom. Discussion.
Can I just clarify? So the sale of this was 33% to the city? Is that correct?
It is. Let me give a little bit of background. At our last meeting, we saw the 33.3% allocation to Cheetah, which was actually stemming from the Crookston Jobs, Inc. contribution. So when this land was initially purchased, 1/3 was Crookston Jobs, 1/3 was the city, and 1/3 was Cheetah. At the last meeting, I was unaware there were two separate contribution agreements, one for Cheetah and one for Crookston Jobs. And through an inquiry of a staff member after last meeting, we were able to go back and research that. So this is just tying up what should've actually been processed as well at the last meeting. So in this case, because as Corky explained to us at the last meeting, after Crookston Jobs dissolved, they transferred assets, and we had a contractual obligation to send, to Cheetah, I'm sorry, to send the 33.33% of both Crookston Jobs net proceeds and Cheetah's portion of the net proceeds from the sale. So normally, you would've seen these on the same meeting, but it was my error not realizing there were two agreements. So I sent a notice to both Craig and their board chair, letting them know we acknowledged the error and that we have it on this agenda. So it is a contractual obligation, just like the Crookston Jobs portion. But yes, you're correct, Councilmember Jerdy, that the city will actually retain 1/3 of the net proceeds of this 10-acre land sale.
And then 66 would go to Cheetah?
Correct.
And some change?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? There ain't none, can I have roll call, please?
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Bratton?
Aye.
Okay, before we do the second reading, Ashley is gonna read the ordinance authorizing electronic participation.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're gonna change it up a little bit. So, "An ordinance of the City of Crookston, Minnesota, authorizing the electronic participation in the City of Crookston meetings and establishment procedures for electronic participation. The City of Crookston as is follows. To the City of Crookston, Minnesota, Charter Section 3.02, of public bodies including the city council and all of the commission, boards, and committees of the city are authorized to conduct meetings and public hearings by any means of communication through which the members thereof and other persons who take part in or present at such meetings or hearings may simultaneously hear each other during the meeting or the hearing. And, B, it is desirable that the city council members, the mayor, the city staff, members of the public to be able to participate in the city council meetings remotely by any means of which communication through which the members thereof of other persons who take part in or present at such meetings or hearings may simultaneously hear each other during the meeting or hearing. The City of Crookston municipality code shall be amended as follows. Meetings and electronic participation. A. Electronic participation authorize the City of Crookston, city council members, and the mayor, and/or city staff, as well as citizens of the City of Crookston, and invites participants may participate in electronic meeting of the city council as provided in this section. All actions undertaken at electronic meeting held in compliance with this sections are valid and binding to the same extent as if participants had been physically present at the anchor location. A request to participate by electronic means shall be to the city administrator not less than 48 hours prior to the meeting in question, and may do not be denied if the City of Crookston does not have the technology capability to connect electronically to remote location. B. Definitions, the following definitions apply to this section. Number one. Anchor locations means the City of Crookston, city council chambers, or any other physical location where a meeting is held from which the electronic meeting originates. Two. Electronic meeting means a meeting of the City of Crookston or conducted where the city council member, the mayor, or city staff members, or members of the public participate by real-time audio or video telecommunications by means. Three. Remote locations means any place other than the anchor location where a city council member, the mayor, the city staff, or member of the public may be located, and where meeting participants can establish electronic access to the meeting. C. Quorum to electronic meetings. One. As otherwise defined in the chapter, the majority of the city council consists of a quorum for the transaction of business. A quorum must be present at the anchor location to convene as electronic meeting of the Crookston City Council. Two. Except as noted in subsection D below, Crookston City Council members participating in electronic meeting from a remote location shall be considered present and are authorized to vote and otherwise participate in the meeting as if they were an anchor location. Three. In the event of a equipment failure or any similar event which causes an interruption or communication with the remote location, the city, excuse me, the Crookston City Council has the discretion to either, one, act on the matters for their consideration on its agenda, or to continue the matter to subsequent meeting. D. General procedures. Number one. Notice that any electronic meetings of the Crookston City Council shall be given in the same manner as is provided for all Crookston City Council meetings. Meetings procedures for electronic meetings for the Crookston City Council shall be the same as for non-electronic meetings except as noted below. Number two. A speaker, phone, or similar amplifying electronic device shall be connected in such manner that comments are made by the person participating electronically will be broadcasted at the anchor location. The presiding officer shall allow remote participation and participate to the decision to the same extent as if they were present at the anchor location. Number three. Matters called to a vote in electronic meeting shall be via roll call, and the council members or mayor, if applicable, participating from a remote location must state their name, their vote audibly when asked by the city clerk. Number four. Minutes of all meetings shall record the presence of all members participating through electronic means. The roll call for members' presence will be taken verbally and recorded. Number five. Crookston City Council members shall not participate in closed meetings of the city council by electronic means. And number six. All electronic meetings of the Crookston City Council shall be chaired by a person physically presented at the anchor location.
Thank you, Ashley. Okay, moving on then.
We haven't read the...
Oh, I don't know. All right, 8.02 is the second reading and final passage of the ordinance authorizing electronic participation in the city council meetings and establishing procedures for electronic participation. Your Honor.
Thank you. This is open for discussion? Any, anything?
I would, I would just say, I would hope as a city council that we don't overutilize this on a consecutive basis. And my big concern is, I wanna make sure that, you know, if we're participating as city council, that we're not, you know, taking a two-month vacation to Arizona and, you know, only being electronically. I understand that there is a need, and it's nice if you happen to be at a work function or what have you, but I really hope that we take that into consideration in utilizing this. I understand that it's probably necessary in certain situations, but I just wanna bring that concern forward, that, you know, that we're using this not haphazardly, and that it's meant to be done for like a case-by-case basis, and not something that we're utilizing to not be in our city for a long periods of time.
On that note, I too, I think, you know, over the years that I've been on council, it seems like before we had electronic participation, that the council members have planned their vacation around council, or around council meetings. You know, so I really haven't seen a hiccup in it, but good point.
Your Honor, I, I agree with both you and Councilmember Jerdy. Having the ability to participate electronically does not lessen the importance of the obligation of both staff and elected officials to be present when we can. It certainly lends to more meaningful conversation when you can see each other in discussion. Part of the trigger to look at this was, we were continuing to extend our emergency orders. Because we are still in that unknown arena of the pandemic, hopefully, we don't see any more spikes or surges, but that's really what spurred this discussion, to talk about, if you're not extending your emergency order, this would allow also those types of participation. Hopefully, none of us are at home on quarantine, but if you were, we can then facilitate. But I do agree that there is still an importance to being present any time that we can, and we have an obligation to be here and serve our public and each other. And certainly, I like the pieces that include some virtual courtesy, you know, where you're, you should speak your name, and we've tried to cover where we can identify everyone that may not be present speaking. If there are any hiccups as we go along, we certainly have the opportunity to address that. And depending on the scenario, that may mean we wanna set some procedures by resolution, perhaps. Maybe we need to come back then and amend a portion of the ordinance, and that, those are all possible. This is new to us, new to this council, new to myself, under the Minnesota State statute. So know that what we do today, whether you pass this ordinance or not pass the ordinance, we do have the opportunity at any time to address an issue that we may not have realized at the time of the reading.
So how is the connection made? Is it through a Zoom, or is it something else?
My, we would hope, especially with our new audio/video, that we could facilitate a Zoom. I think it would be better for each of you and the public if we can then see it up on the wall, which then broadcasts out. If it's not, if that is not possible, depending on where someone is, this does close that gap a little bit on using the telephone, which certainly would be harder, not being able to see the members present, and then us not being able to see the person that's absent. But it would allow that by telephone. That certainly wouldn't be our preference, and we would do everything that we can to facilitate a Zoom-style participation so that we can broadcast that with the meeting.
Corky?
Just wanted to reiterate what Amy has said. This is our original entry into this realm. We wanted to try to create one that's basic to start with, and as you experience this and as we implement it, if we see there need to be changes, if we need to see that there are alterations, that can be done. This is not the end-all here, this is the beginning. So if we see from our experience that it needs to be changed by resolution or amendment, certainly, we can do that and understand. This is our first step. This is a baby step into this particular arena.
And, Your Honor, I did, I failed to mention, we did also consult our IT director to make sure there was nothing we were saying we could do that we couldn't actually fulfill. So he's been part of that conversation as well, so that we're making sure that what we put in here is something we can actually facilitate.
I mean, I would like to see, I mean, I don't know for how far this is gonna go, but I know Joel said something earlier about being interactive with our laptops when we see maps, you know, instead of trying to crank around and see them on different walls, if it can be. And then maybe eventually, everybody has their, or even though we're here, maybe there's a Zoom profile, per se,
Yeah.
on everybody's laptop. So if you happen to be away, it's almost being...
You can see it, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that Chad addressed that a little bit at a prior meeting, that we will have to, we will look into that. There are some agenda programs that allow us to push things out. I think that'll fall more in line with the audio, our new audio/video, and then possibly additional programs that we would need. But I, I do see what you're saying. I have experienced that at the past city I worked at, where you could get things right there on your device, as well as being put up on the wall for the public to see and broadcast.
It would be nice if we're talking about certain streets. I mean, sometimes when we're doing that, I go on Google Earth and I'm zooming in to see what, what the situation is, and if we could have that prepared for us so we're all looking at the same thing when we're discussing, discussing certain items like that.
Yes, I agree with that.
I think what he's trying to say too is, a lot of times, we're sitting here, the, the print or the writing on the wall is, is very small.
Yes.
It's very hard for us to see what is being talked about, so...
And this wall has some texture, which makes it a little harder. Those are...
It's a little tougher, it's not as bright, and so you can see that right on...
Yes, and those are actually some particular items we are working through internally, even for members in the audience or the public, to see how we can get a clearer vision and maybe do some adjustments, offer some different views for people so it's easier for all of us, including those in the gallery, to see what's up on the wall.
Any further discussion?
My one other thing that I was just kinda considering as we go forward is that I understand that Zoom capabilities, depending on where we at, at some times could be a little bit hairy in not being able to find a space or the internet to do so. But I think that if we make that a priority, that that would always be the way that we call in unless there's absolutely no other way to do it. I think that's important. I think everybody in this room probably has been on a conference call at one time or another, where you don't know who is talking. And I think that kind of inhibits the whole conversation that we're having as a council. So it would be, I think, important for us to really consider to try our best to be on camera if we are to be remote. And obviously, I understand that there's always gonna be that hiccup or something could happen, but I think there's a real importance of being able to see all the council members and knowing who's having, who's speaking, and where the conversation is going. And if not, us developing some type of logistical piece so we understand who's talking, and then maybe that is us announcing as we are having these discussions, or that person that is just on audio. So just something to think about as we go forward.
Anyone else? Can, I have a motion to approve this ordinance.
Move it.
Your Honor, we have already had a, it's been introduced in seconds, so we just need roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
No, sorry. Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Bratton?
Aye.
Okay, moving on.
Item 8.03 is a resolution to approve the rezoning of 334 Crescent Avenue from the Planning Commission, Your Honor.
Have a motion to approve this resolution.
I make that motion, Your Honor.
Wayne, thank you, second.
No, that, Your Honor, oh. I think that was Councilmember Briggs that made the motion, yeah.
No, it was Wayne first.
Oh, oh, I heard you. Okay, he beat him.
Wayne.
I'm doing it visually.
I heard the same thing too, so I just wanted to clarify.
We'll pull our ears out after this.
Yeah, definitely, so Wayne.
Wayne has first, and Wayne has second.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Bratton? Your Honor, 8.04 is a resolution to approve the cash farm lease agreement with CND Wrightmeyer, Inc. until November 30th of 2023.
I have a motion to approve this resolution.
Move it.
Steve?
I'll second.
And Christie, thank you. Discussion.
Did they get an opportunity to renew it again after three years without going through the bidding?
For this particular lease, he actually did put a bid in. It's been a little while back, so it is a three-year lease. We were able to sit down with Lowell, our airport manager and the tenant, just to discuss a few logistical items, like what crops they were planning to plant, to make sure we were all on the same page, provided the tenant with a new map that SEH created for us that shows the decommissioned runway. Talked through a couple of things, feel like we are on the same page as for our staff and the tenant. Our airport didn't have any issues. It's been to Planning Commission, so felt it was vetted out and ready to come before council for action.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Melby?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Bratton?
Aye.
Your Honor, item 8.05 is a resolution to approve the UMC slash CSC lease agreement.
I have a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Don, second.
Second.
Second by Joel, thank you, discussion.
Was this not, did they pay, say, the last, or this one, that they've already used it?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
They've already had one season in there? Does this go back to that, so that one gets paid?
I...
They've, they've never discontinued, I don't think, Tom.
I think...
They've been paying right along.
I'm gonna let City Attorney answer, but we've gone, he's worked with their legal counsel quite a bit, so Corky, can you address that?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
As you can see from the first whereas in a multiple whereas, UMC had a lease that expired in 2014. This is their first year back. So this is a lease that commenced last year. There has been no payment up to this point. They fully intended to pay, but the university's main policy is they do not pay any funds until they have a signed lease. So presently, they do owe $50,000. My understanding from talking to the financial officer at UMC is they have the check, they just need this passed tonight, signatures of the appropriate people, they get our W-9, we send it to them, and they pay us for last year when they used it. Yep. As an aside, this was quite a process. When you're dealing with the university, there's one of me and there's ten of them. But I think it's a very fair lease. It's a very comfortable lease. I've checked with Scott Riappell. He's very comfortable with it. The university staff is very comfortable, including the financial officer. And the university legal team paid all of you a very good compliment, saying, "It was well-done, well-executed," and they hope to use this in the future for other entities that they deal with. So, but it did take, it did take a year.
Thank you, Corky. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Melby?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Bratton?
Aye.
Item eight point zero six is a resolution calling for a public hearing for amending the Wellhead Protection Plan, Your Honor. The public hearing will be held on April twenty-sixth, 2021, at seven o'clock at the City Hall Council Chambers here at 124 North Broadway, Crookston, Minnesota 56716, to discuss comments provided for local units of government and solicit comments from the public.
Motion to approve this resolution.
I make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Clayton, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Christie, discussion? Roll call, please.
Melby?
Aye.
Jody?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Kressel?
Aye.
Clatt?
Aye.
Ved Bratton?
Aye.
All right. Reports, Amy.
Your Honor, I'll be brief this evening, but this was our first night of broadcasting our City Council meeting live on our YouTube channel. We post that out on a Facebook post, and we will begin including that with our agendas. And then just another reminder about spring cleanup on the week of April twenty-sixth, and we will be sharing that information and the link to the news release with the pertinent information you need to know on what items you can place out, the timings. We'll be posting that again, or you may always call us at City Hall. We will be happy to help you if you need help with your pickup date or any information about the city cleanup week. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, anything?
I'll have to report, Your Honor.
Brian?
I'll have to report, Your Honor.
Chad?
No report, Your Honor.
Nice job, by the way.
Thank you.
Chief Beermeyer?
The only thing is, I'm quite impressed with Chad. He does not sit still during this, but if there's ever a question on who motion first and second, he might be able to do an instant replay.
You have it on tape.
For next time.
Yeah.
We're supposed to keep an eye on him back there. Scott?
Nothing to make, Your Honor.
Thank you. About the other, Scott?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief Rover?
Our hovering process is complete for our career firefighter, and I'd like to welcome James Pearl to our team. He will be starting on the twentieth, and we'll be back to full staff. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Greg?
No report, Your Honor.
Pat?
No report, Your Honor.
All right. Start with Tom.
Nothing to report tonight, Your Honor.
Elaine?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Joe?
Well, just wanted to let everybody know that visitors' guides are outprinted and at all the hotels and being dispersed throughout the area for the CDB and hotels and all the good stuff. You have not all seen them yet. You can gather one up right here at City Hall, I believe, and take a look at it. They did a nice job. And the welcome signs are well underway. One is all dug out, ready to go on its south end. I think they're waiting for the frost to come out, pull the posts and all that. One on north end is being worked on. I think it's going to be a nice addition to the City of Crookston. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Joe. Don?
Welcome back, Scott, from your operation. See you walking a little bit now. The chamber has met, and they're, they're in the interviewing process to hire a new director. And also, if you are interested, you can purchase their flower baskets for sale, so everybody can ask it for downtown.
Thank you, Don. Clayton?
I'd just like to compliment the Crookston Fire Department and the Crookston Police Department. With the grass fires and so on and stuff going on with Crookston, I appreciate the fact that these departments work together with all the town departments so well. I have had many compliments on both the Fire Department and the Police Department in their cooperation with other agencies. So, thank you, Chief Rover and Chief Beermeyer.
Kudos. Thank you. Steve?
Nope, Joe kind of said it all. Only thing, other thing that he had was social media for their website for the CDB. They're hoping by the end of April to have that online, so it'll be another tool for the City of Crookston and CDB to track people to Crookston.
Thank you. Christie?
I don't have anything to report, though. I'd like to say, I really appreciate all the hard work it has taken to get us up and running and officially out in the community via YouTube and Facebook, because I know that's one of the biggest things that our constituents have really wanted in the past, and so it's great to see that it's up and running. So, kudos to Chad back there and doing his magic, so.
Thank you. Christie, Wayne?
Yeah, I too, I had my kids out in Arizona, and I do plan on making the meetings. But I did have him check it out. No, he was on YouTube the night, earlier. He said he couldn't get on right at seven, and there were seven people waiting, and then it was about two minutes after or so, then he said it's up and running now. It looks good. So, so it does work. And so that's all I got.
Thank you, Wayne. I've got one item. This is kind of a hats off to Pat. This came out a couple of weeks ago, and it's real short, and so I'm just going to go ahead and read it. But it came from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. I know Pat was copied on this. But it says, "This letter is written to acknowledge receipt of pre-treatment annual report for calendar year 2020 in the City of Crookston. Your report has been reviewed and recorded. Report was on time, completed, and indicated no discharge from industrial users in the calendar year 2020." So they're saying, "Thank you for your cooperation with our pre-treatment program. Your efforts are important contribution to the protection of our citizens' health, the preservation of surface and groundwater quality, and the recycling of limited resources." So hats off to Pat and his crew. Thank you. Nothing else to become before our council. There is no ways and means tonight. We are adjourned.